The appointed hour has arrived. I may have your attention. In accordance with Massachusetts General Loth, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anybody is recording this meeting, and if so, please make yourself known to me at this time. Seeing none, I'd ask we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Levesque, will you tell us about today's activities, please?
Remember and recognize that today is the National Day of Prayer for our country and that all over our Commonwealth, like, what was this, sorry?
All over the Commonwealth, all over our, all over the country, obviously at the Capitol, at the State House, I had the opportunity to go to a service at the Yarmouth Police Department, and a wonderful service, many representatives, pastors, and from all over Cape Cod were there, again fabulous event, I just want to recognize that, and in your own way, and it is the National Day of Prayer, so I invite you to pray while during the moment of silence. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This makes my first road trip, so I'm gonna head to the front podium, please bear with me for a moment.
Counselors, Beedenbender?
Here.
Crocker?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Dagwan?
Here.
Florist?
Here.
Rob Crisetti?
Present.
Hebert?
Present.
Levesque?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein-Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Yep.
It's a fine group, isn't it? They represent us well. Tonight, we are honored to have in our chambers Hillary V. Green, the Executive Director of the Cape and Island Southwest Massachusetts Chapter of the American Red Cross, who will be here to present a certificate from Washington DC. How are ya? Welcome. Sure. I'll tell the story, you shake the hands.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
I hope I can tell the story without feeling it too much, this is really an incredible issue. On Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, a seventeen-year-old young lady from Hyannis was removed from the water at Kovels Beach in Centerville. Lifeguard Ethan Sherhal of Centerville was the primary rescuer. He was assisted by a bystander, who was a physician's assistant, in performing one cycle of the American Red Cross Professional Rescue CPR. The young lady came to, began vomiting, and discharged saltwater. As Ethan's Red Cross training had given him the knowledge to perform CPR, he also knew of the importance of putting her into the recovery position, which is to place her on her side. The physician's assistant later gave Ethan the credit for saving this woman's life because of his knowledge and training to put her in the recovery position. Our lifeguards are very well-trained, they take their job seriously. We hope that they will never get this call into action, but that the training by the Red Cross provides the work that is, this is a great example of. Congratulations to Ethan, please come forward.
I wasn't expecting it.
Yeah, exactly.
He said he wasn't expecting it.
That was the whole idea. They kept telling me, "Close the citation, you might see you do it." Anyway, so Ethan?
Oh, gotta go.
On behalf of the American Red Cross, both our national office, our regional office, Red Cross of Massachusetts, and our local office, Cape Islands and Southeast Mass, right down the street there, we are very proud to present you with a life-saving award from the American Red Cross, which is signed by our President and CEO, really signed, this is not in the photograph, and our Chairman, Bonnie McElveen-Hunter, and Gail McGovern. So it's the citation which pretty much President Crocker just read to you, but we are very pleased to present that you put your Red Cross training to such good use to help save a life, and we appreciate you taking the training and the whole, Patty Machado, where are you? Where are you? For keeping your lifeguard so well-trained, it seems every year we have some wonderful story to share with them, and we gave you a Red Cross Massachusetts pin and an American Red Cross pin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any advisors for the Youth Committee with us tonight? I think it would be appropriate that an advisor comes forward and says something about some activities, since we have all these young men and women of Barnstable with us tonight.
Good evening. Good evening, Lynn Pointant, Community Services Director for the Town of Barnstable, and you just want me because I'm the clump. So, but I have to say that this has been a really extraordinary group, every year we are blessed with very dedicated students, and I think that one of the things that, about this year's group, is that they've expanded their outreach. In addition to Barnstable High School, we have students from Sturgis East and West, we have a student from Saint John Paul II, and we have someone from Cape Cod Tech, and they're all Barnstable students, but they see what the Youth Commission's been doing over the years, and they're trying to spread the good word throughout the Cape, which is really outstanding. When you ask about who the advisors are, the incomparable Patty Machado, who is our Director of Recreation, who gives... She lives, eats, and breathes the, and sleeps the Youth Commission. We've also have Lieutenant Jeannie Chalice from the Barnstable Police Department, who's been an outstanding participant. John Gleason is our Assistant Recreation Director, and he's on the periphery, but he, Patty's, you know, been bringing them along, and another outstanding participant is Kippy Diggs from our DPW. And you really don't want to hear any more from me, I'm gonna turn it over to the Chair of our Youth Commission this year, Matthew McCauley.
Thank you. Matthew, if you introduce yourself, and please tell us the village you live in.
Sorry. Hi, so I'm Matt McCauley, I'm the Chairman of the Barnstable Youth Commission, and I live in Centerville. So, get the presentation started. There we go. So, like I said, I'm Matt McCauley, Chairman of the Barnstable Youth Commission, I am currently a senior at Barnstable High School, and next year I'll be attending Northeastern University to study Electrical and Computer Engineering. So the Barnstable Youth Commission, for those of you who don't know, is a commission consisting of thirteen students from the Town of Barnstable, who are appointed by you, the Town Council, and we follow all the same rules and regulations that any other board committee or commission in the Town of Barnstable follows, including, you know, Roberts Rules and the Public Meeting Laws and so forth. So, we focus on really representing the youth, being the voice of the youth, trying to identify issues, and do whatever we can to address those issues. So you'll be hearing in this presentation about many of the things that we have done throughout the year to address what we have identified, but I'll start off by kind of explaining that we meet every second and fourth Tuesday at 6:30 at the HYCC, and we meet from September through June, and we also have a sort of recruiting picnic at a beach during the month of August. So I'll now have Jenna.
Hi, I'm Jen Ashment, and I live in Centerville. I go to Barnstable High School, and I'm in the eighth grade. We collaborated with Barnstable County Child and Family Services to present the film Screenagers. We had about thirty people watch, mostly families who were trying to decide with their children when to get a phone and how often they're gonna use the phone.
Good evening, Counselors, my name is Ethan Sherhal, I'm a senior at Sturgis East, I will be going to Tulane University in New Orleans next year, and I will be pursuing my MBA. So, an event that we're really excited about this year we were able to do was the Fifth Annual Community Substance Abuse Prevention Forum. We worked closely with Barnstable Police Sergeant Jennifer Ellis to put this on, and what we were able to do was set up a panel and a discussion for the community, parents, really anyone who wanted to come and learn, about the contraband that's making its way around schools, and it had a show-and-tell aspect of it, so the people who were in attendance were able to see, you know, what exactly is going around, and, you know, recognize it, put a name to an item. And we're also, something that we were big on was, we had a psychiatrist from Cape Cod Healthcare who was able to come, and just educate the community on how to start the discussion with their kids, and make sure that they don't get into anything they don't want to be in. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Morgan Contrino, I'm a junior at Barnstable High School, and I live in Barnstable Village, and I'll be introducing one of our biggest and most important events of the Youth Commission, also under the umbrella of Substance Abuse Prevention, which is the Fifth Annual Seventh Grade Youth Summit. And we had program presenters Kevin Rosario of Gosnold of Cape Cod, Rob Hackinson of Dynamic Influence, and we had twenty BHS students of the Peer Leadership Club, and we also had Kevin Stevens of the Power Forward Foundation presenting in our program.
Hello, my name is Connor Levesque, and I currently reside in Marson's Mills, and currently am a junior at Barnstable High School. At this year's Youth Summit, we were able to fundraise by ourselves by sending various letters and grants to the JFK Memorial Trust Fund, Cape Cod Healthcare, the Cape and Island District Attorney's Office, Hyannis-Kuonos, and we also asked the Five Star Bus Company to donate their buses to us, and they generously did for our transportation for the kids to the community college. This year during lunch, we had fourteen nonprofit organizations available for the kids to visit and kind of talk to them about what is around in the community. We also had BHS, various, various BHS students who were mentors and talked to the kids about various clubs and sports that they could join when they come to Barnstable High School. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Willie Beal, I'm in Barnstable Village, and I'm a sophomore at Sturgis East. This year, we also hosted the Third Annual Youth Job Fair, and we had the most participants with two-hundred-and-thirty-four, from fifteen different schools, we also had two busloads of students from Barnstable High School. One of the most important parts of this day was the job coaching provided by the former town manager, Warren Rutherford, and his son, Kevin Rutherford, of Executive Suites. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Piper Hahn, and I'm an eighth grader at Barnstable High School. As a commission, we have met with various local officials, and we plan on having a trip to the State House in the fall.
Hello, I'm Sean Dowling, I'm a senior at Barnstable High School, I currently reside in Hyannis, and I will be attending Bridgewater State University in the fall to study aviation science. Another great program we got to attend last year and is coming up soon this year was the Intergenerational Tea, where we partnered with the Bridges Together Program and the Council on Aging, and we got to learn about great stories and wisdom from the senior citizens in our community. Thank you.
So another activity that I had the privilege of attending was the Intergenerational Storytelling, which was an activity that was put on at the Senior Center for various BHS students that, who wanted to attend and hear the stories of the senior citizens that came to the Senior Center. This year, I met a wonderful gentleman named Mr. Lovell Elliott, who told me a lot about his life and how he collected autographs of various presidents over and over again, and he was nice enough to give me a golf autograph because he knew that I talked about golf a lot and liked golf a lot. And also, I just want to thank him for that, and thank the people who put on this activity for putting it on. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucas McCauley, I'm from Barnstable High School, I'm a freshman, and I live in Centerville. So, this, this past April, we put on the One Love Program by the One Love Foundation. We, this is the second time we put it on in Barnstable, we will be putting it on May 24th at Sturgis East and West with about a hundred-and-fifty seniors. The One Love Program is a, is a program that teaches students from high school to college about healthy and unhealthy relationships, and how to deal with those, and what is the best way going to go about that. So the way the program takes place is they watch a movie called, they watch a movie called Escalation, and in this movie, there is relationship abuse depicted and certain themes shown. After that, there is a guided conversation with an adult facilitator, and maybe one or two student facilitators. This year, we had about twenty groups, and it's really a great way for the students to learn how to really go through a proper relationship and how to make it a healthy one. Thank you to Matt Levesque and Town Manager Mark Ellis for being two of our adult facilitators this year.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Stanford, I live in West Barnstable, and I'm in tenth grade, and I go to Saint John Paul II High School. So another campaign that we held this year was the Think Healthy Campaign, and we collaborated with the Barnstable Police Department to promote healthy lifestyles. We created magnets, and we hung them up in both Barnstable High School and Barnstable Intermediate School in different classrooms, so that if any eyes wandered during class, they may look at a positive quote. We are hoping to expand this in Saint, in other schools represented in Barnstable, such as Sturgis East, Sturgis West, and Saint John Paul II High School, and if you would like a magnet to hang up in your office, they are available.
Hello, I'm George Cole, I reside in Hyannis, I'm currently a senior at Barnstable High School, and next year I'll be going to Georgetown University to study Government and Economics. So it's my pleasure to present to you our State Youth Homelessness Survey, this is our fifth year of conducting it. Over the past four years, we have gone to various local safe spaces such as the parks, the HYCC, the mall, and wherever else we can find people between the ages of sixteen and twenty-five to complete our survey, so we may get data points to present to the state, so we may better extend our services to help them. As a result of our work, Barnstable County receives a grant this year of $232,000, and we hope in the future with the added participation of all seven of our village libraries that we may gain even more, even, even larger grant, so we may better help the youth in our community. Thank you very much. All right. Any questions? No? All right, well, thank you all for your support over this past year and going into the future. Thank you.
Now I know you all got homework, so you could, could shuffle out, you won't offend us. Thank you very much for coming, very enlightening, appreciate it. Please, we must reconvene our meeting. We must reconvene our meeting, please. This is the public comment process of our meeting, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the public comment, please feel free to do so. Please sign in. Last call. Okay, we'll close the public comment portion. There isn't a need for council response, but if anybody would like to make another point about the Youth Summit and the Youth Group, please feel free to. I'll work my way down from Counselor Levesque.
It was a privilege to be a part of that, I mean, that the Youth Commission, and kudos to Counselor Cullum for being a part and being the advisor to that and really helping that started, and obviously Patty Machado, it was just an incredible experience, go to the, actually be able to take the whole day and go to the Youth Summit, and then get invited to do the One Love, and there isn't, I got, I got more rewarded by it than, than, I'm sure than the kids did, and just by being a part of it, and then I was a part of a fantastic group. Trevor Blaze was the student advisor in the group when we were counseling with the, in discussing the movie with the, the students, and he was intricate in getting the, the program started and into the school, and so having his knowledge behind the whole program was just, again, fantastic, just so happy to be part of the program, all the things that they're, they're doing, and just for the record, my son Connor has actually been a Youth Commissioner longer than I've been a Town Counselor, so he did that on his own before I became a Town Counselor, so I'm proud that he's able to be a part and, and learn from such great people like Lynn, Patty Machado, Kippy Diggs, Lieutenant Chalice, and if I'm forgetting anybody, I apologize, but so many great people involved. Counselor Cullum, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Beedenbender.
I, had they stayed in the room, I just wanted to say that how, how uplifting it is to see so many young people, so mature, so articulate, so motivated, so kind and thoughtful, and, and it's, it's so needed in this day and age, and so they are the true leaders, and I just felt really privileged to be able to, to have them here tonight, and so thank you to everyone behind that. And I know my daughter was benefited from the Youth Commission in the past, she wasn't part of it, but she benefited from programs that they put on, so thank you to all involved, and it really, it just makes me feel good that those kids are, are part of our town.
Yes, Counselor Cullum.
Yes, so, you know, I guess there's so many things I love about the Youth Commission, but primarily, since I've been a Town Counselor, I've always been saying that the one thing missing at every policy table on drugs and alcohol and prevention is the youthful voice. And so it's, and that's one of the reasons why we jump-started the Committee of the Youth Commission, and that's why the Seventh Grade Youth Summit started, and, and since then, since those very, like, nascent days, it's, it's kind of tentacled out into all sorts of cool things, like domestic violence, and like, all of these things that, you know, when I was a kid, nobody talked to me about any of that, and I just think it's so important that we're teaching our young men and our young women how to behave with each other. And I'm, I'm so impressed at how our, the adults in our community have rallied around these kids to help share that message. I'm really thankful for Patty, of course, and Lynn, and Kippy Diggs, and Brian Morrison, and Jeannie, and, you know, all people that have become very good friends, and in this shared mission to grow a stronger youth in our community. And we have, you know, we have a couple of arms that are doing different things, but equally important, we have the Achievers on one side, and then we have the Youth Commission on the other. And one of the things that's super special about the Youth Commission is that they're not under the umbrella of the School Committee, and I think it, you know, it maybe ruffles a few feathers here and there when we have kids saying, "We actually want to talk about domestic violence and relationships with teenagers," and I know it took a lot to get One Love off the ground, and I want to thank all the advisors who are persistent and insistent that we talk about these things because they're happening younger, and we're asking our children to become adults at a much younger age now. And so it's not just drugs, it's all these other heavy things that are, that are hitting them really, really young, and these are, these are the people taking care of us when we're old, so, I mean, I'm just saying they should be prepared. And so I'm really thankful for, for how fearless we've been with that, and, and how much we're supporting them, so that when they go to college and they're confronted with something, they're gonna have an arsenal of information to say, "Wait a minute, yeah, 'cause I've seen this, and I don't want this, and I know how to react to that, and I'm gonna make it right, and you don't need to react that way, you can react this way." Just all this intelligence of human emotion, so I'm thankful, and I wish they were here because they make me proud every single time, and, and I hope my son grows up like that. So, thank you.
Vice President Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President, I won't repeat what my fellow counselors have said, but just remind folks that what's wonderful about the Youth Commission is that it's not only Barnstable High School, but it's every school within the confines of the town, and I remember as a lifelong educator and school administrator and superintendent, the best part of any meeting was always when the kids came and gave a presentation, and you said to yourself, "Wow, I can't believe how, A, sophisticated these kids are, how committed they are to do the right thing for the right reasons," and so I applaud, and not only the folks that have been mentioned, Patty Machado, Lynn Pointant, and others, Matt Levesque, they're just an incredible group of kids, I've had the opportunity to speak to them one-on-one individually, some of them have come before the JFK Trust Committee that, meetings that we've had, and they're just a wonderful group of kids, and it makes me proud to be not only a Town Council in Barnstable, but also just a resident, I mean, they represent us well, and you can tell by the schools even that they're attending, whether they're going into the service, the Army, the Navy, the Marines, the Coast Guard, whatever, or whether kids are going to Georgetown and Northeastern, they just represent us in a way that I think all of us as citizens of the community should be proud, and we should continuously give them a round of applause, they're just good people, good kids, coming from really great families. Thank you.
Starting on my other end, yes, Counselor Snep.
Thank you. I had the good fortune to stop in at the Seventh Grade Youth Summit, and when I found out that it was all put together and run by the Youth Commission, I was astounded, I couldn't believe that they, they were able to pull that off, it was a phenomenal event, and then to see the range of types of activities that they're involved in, substance abuse, screen use, homelessness, working with our seniors, it's, it's a tremendous gift that we have in this community, so I applaud everyone who's been involved. Thank you.
Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I too won't repeat some of it, but, but it truly is, you know, after all the time up here, and one of the, my favorite meetings are when we have the, the youth in front of us, and you've heard me many times brag about the Barnstable school system, and what a perfect example of this is, and, and on a side note, and it may sound flippant or funny, but it's not meant to, but, you know, we have the Lombardi Trophy, we have the Kennedy Foundation, and I think someday, the Youth Commission will be called the Cullum Commission, because I've seen my counselor from Precinct 13 really shepherd it through the council here, in her passion and caring, and, and kudos to her again, because I don't think Jen gets quite enough credit for what she does with our youth, and, and addressing some of the problems that they have to face today. Thank you.
Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President, I was hoping that Mr. Connor Levesque was going to come up and say, "Counselors, Dad." But, but the reality is that, that you're the one, as a parent, that helped make that young man who he is today, and I couldn't help but sit here and say how lucky we are to have this caliber of young people in our community, and everyone has contributed to that, as parents, as grandparents, as teachers, as civic leaders in all forms, so it's kudos to us as a community, the old saying, "Takes a village to raise a child," the living proof of it is what we just witnessed, so, kudos to everybody, thank you. Thank you.
Council Dagone, did I see you?
Yes, I just, some of them have been here before, so it's nice to see that they've grown not only physically, but they've matured. And I, you know, it makes me feel good, as others have said, that we're in such good hands here in the town for some of our future leaders. These students are handling some really tough issues, caring issues, such as cyberbullying and substance abuse and healthy relationships. That's so important today, especially with all the kind of bullying that has been occurring with students as well. And they're acting in a very proactive way. So I feel that those are some of the future leaders of our town here.
Councilors, all set? Yes. Director of Communications.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, Councilor Hebert was right on, and we have Nora Montero sitting here, whose daughter Piper Hunt was one of the youth commissioners that spoke. And we have very dedicated parents because not all of them drive. And so there's a way that these kids have got to get to and from meetings. And so we're extremely grateful to the parents. When Connor Leveque was talking about this intergenerational storytelling program, our Cracker Jack team of Channel 18 went and filmed those. And in the future, there is going to be a program, sometimes in snippets, but then in a full program of the pearls of wisdom that were shared with the youth when they were interviewing the elders in our community. And I also want to say that the Youth Commission just met with our superintendent of schools on Monday, and that's something that they've done on a pretty regular basis, those students that are from Barnstable High School. Conversations are not always easy. Meg will ask something and she may not get the answer that she thinks that she's going to get, but then she's willing to work to address it. And I have to say that when we went to Barnstable High School to bring One Love there, Meg was in our corner. It didn't feel that way at first, but it really was because she brought the people at the table that we needed to have at the table. So, and Town Manager Mark Els has been incredibly supportive, incredibly, I mean, he's so busy, but he's really given his time to this group of kids and that time is not wasted. So, thank you very much for recognizing them.
Thank you. And thank you, Lynn, for organizing the events. It was a great way to start our night. And before we leave, if that's Pepper's mom, I would like to tell you, I noticed when she came forward, she reached for the mic, adjusted it, took it with confidence and clearly prepared to talk to a very diverse group of people. So you're raising a fine young woman there. And as I recall, she was only in the eighth grade, I believe, so, exciting. Congratulations. With that in mind, I would ask the council's indulgence to move first to some new business to accommodate some of our guests who are with us tonight. Hearing no objections, I would ask Council Neri to read 2019-193, and that's on page 35, sir.
Will do, Mr. President.
From why he prepares, I would like to make one more statement. We are fortunate to have five more students with us tonight. They're from the Lighthouse Charter School. Would you please stand, gang? And they have chosen to do research on our council as part of their work for school. Congratulations. Thank you.
Alrighty. This is new business that may be acted upon. It's item number 2019-193. It's the acceptance of fiscal year 2019 grant in the amount of $1 million from the Seaport Economic Council Grant Program for Expedition Blue. As written.
I have a first and a second. May I have a rationale, please?
Good evening, councilors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight to request acceptance of a $1 million Seaport Economic Council grant to the town of Barnstable in partnership with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce for the development of a Maritime Heritage Experience Trail called Expedition Blue. The town's role as municipal partner in this grant is as administrator for this exciting regional project that brings together our traditional tourism sector with our growing blue economy. And with your indulgence, I'd like to introduce Wendy Northcross, CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber, who will give us more details on this project.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
So I have a very brief presentation to basically explain something that's been a little interesting to propose to people. So the Cape Cod Chamber's goal is to help our entire region's economy, to diversify our industries and grow the different business opportunities that employ Cape Codders. And just as 100 years ago, our mission was to create a travel and tourism industry on Cape Cod. Today, we're advancing the vision of a blue economy. So we do this work with many partners. One of our premier partners is the town of Barnstable as the business center and with two coastlines, you're very important to us. And through the very strong support of the Baker and Toledo administration, we have successfully competed for a $1 million grant from the Seaport Economic Council. This in fact will be our fourth grant from that part of the Commonwealth. The grant is to construct a region-wide network of structures that will highlight and explain our blue economy and work to inspire people to learn more, to get involved and to become employed in our blue industries. So the Chamber and our new Blue Economy Foundation were co-applicants with the town of Barnstable for this major grant. And tonight, we're asking that you accept the funds from the SEC in order for us to do this work. So briefly, this is, I'm pushing the wrong button, there we go. So this one slide gives you the sense of scale. We have a scalable concept here. It's a hardscape installation that will be at key sites with public access, highlighting our connections to water-based industries, activities and resources. This slide depicts the first pass of our design concepts and shows you how we're considering varying size installations. This particular slide would be the smallest in such installation, essentially a kiosk. This would have not only text and a particular view that you're focused on, but there's also an electronic component supported by a responsive design website that would deliver further information. This would be more of a medium-sized structure. The emerging concept is to use prefabricated units so we can scale up or down depending on the site. And we believe that the site should have other amenities beyond knowledge and a view. We think that they should have benches and shade and be a place of respite and rest. We think that they should also evoke our Cape and Islands sense of place. So there's ubiquitous cedar shingles. This map gives you a sense of the scale of our project. We're looking to do at least 20 installations. Our project area encompasses the islands and southeastern Plymouth. And these are some of the partners that we have identified and are considering installations. And if you would give me a second and hopefully we can launch into a very short video.
From the Voyager satellite photograph taken six million miles away, Carl Sagan referred to our earth and home as the pale blue dot. Blue is a color that not only surrounds us, but sustains and defines us. Zooming into the Cape Cod region, water drives the economy. Everywhere you look, you see the blue economy, from the oyster farms in Cape Cod Bay and commercial fishing fleets in Plymouth, Chatham, Monemsha and Provincetown, to the ferries in Hyannis, the boatyards in Pecassett, and groundbreaking scientific exploration and innovation in Woods Hole. The Cape Cod Blue Economy Project has three main objectives. One, support a vibrant maritime and technology economy. Two, demonstrate how a healthy environment builds healthy economies. And three, develop a prepared and educated workforce. While the Cape Cod region is world-renowned for its beautiful beaches and picturesque landscapes, few realize Cape Cod and the islands and nearby southern Plymouth County are the epicenter of a vibrant water economy, with a diverse array of businesses, organizations and individuals whose livelihoods are inherently connected to the water. The environment is our economy. The Cape region's history is storied with tales of seafaring explorers, pirates, shipbuilders, whalers, fishermen and mariners. Since the 1600s, Cape Cod's industries have relied upon the sea for their welfare and survival. Cape Cod's regional blue economy ranges from operations that are directly dependent on the water to those that grow from and support a robust blue economy. The region's educational workforce is derived from high-performing K-12 schools, one of the nation's few maritime academies, and the world's leader in marine science and technology. Coupled with a robust cluster of companies and higher education institutions, both on Cape Cod and in the Boston-Cambridge metro area, the Cape Cod region is the epicenter of blue. Cape Cod's young professionals appreciate the region's thriving arts, culture and culinary scene, along with outdoor activities on over 1,000 miles of coastline, from kite surfing to simply unwinding at the beach. Building on existing sustainable tourism, world-class marine research and land use planning dedicated to preserving our environment and quality of life, our effort aims for full inclusion with existing economic efforts in the region. So whether you're an entrepreneur investing in your business, a retiree ready to enjoy a new phase of your life, or a young professional seeking opportunity in a forward-thinking community, our region has it. There is a vibrant culture of blue waiting for the next generation of visionary talent to help make this corner of the pale blue dot a thriving resource for other marine-based economies to learn from and flourish. Please, join us now.
I wanted to thank you for your support of this very worthy capital investment and we hope to make you proud. Happy to answer any questions.
I've seen pieces of the blue economy discussed and it was brought forward by your able assistant. Would you like to introduce him?
I would. So we have, I brought my, the backup team in case you had any hard questions. So Chris Adams is our chief of staff and he has been instrumental in spearheading the blue economy project for the Cape and Islands region in southeastern Plymouth. Mike Travato actually has been a great champion and supporter and Elizabeth Jenkins, too, has been very key for our advancement of this particular project. So we're here to answer any questions.
I'm going this way first. Yes, Council Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks. Beautiful. Within the scope of what you're doing, which looks very, very beautiful, will there be words about how we could all effectively reduce pollution of the ocean, which, especially when it comes to the plastics as we move forward in that project?
I expect we'll be highlighting some organizations who have that as part of their mission as well, yes.
Councilors? Yes, Council Rappaport City?
Thank you. This is great. Wow, that's a lot of money and...
A lot of work.
I'm sure. I urge you to, in your capacity, to implore the governor and lieutenant governor who chairs this council to appoint someone from Cape Cod to serve on the council, because there is no one representing the Cape.
Actually, I believe Murray Scudder from Highline.
That must be recent. So that must be a recent appointment.
I know he's been a great champion for us when we've applied for various grants, but I think it's a good pick and I know he's been active with them.
Good, good. Congratulations.
But we can ask for two appointments.
Councilors? Council Bean Benda?
Thank you, Wendy. This is really exciting. Just kind of curious, as it unfolds, so, two things. One, will there be some sort of an app related to this where it sort of takes you into a deeper dive? So you're at a particular site and then you can sort of barcode it or something like that and it takes you to a deeper dive on a particular subject or...
Yes, but it won't be an app, it'll be a responsive website. It's more ubiquitous and it's more easily changed and it's a little more cost-effective.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second thing is, you mentioned in your opening statement, sort of this connection to, you know, part of the idea is not only to educate the public as to what we offer here, but hopefully get more folks excited to become involved in these types of industries. So is there some kind of an interface that connects viewers with sort of jobs that are out there or some sort of, you know what I mean, some sort of connecting point between the two?
That's part of the goal. For example, we can see having a facility installed at the ferry terminals and talking about the types of jobs that you can have on the water. There might be something overlooking an aquaculture bed and talking about how you could get a grant and make a living from the sea. So that is very much at the root of, we want people to think about Cape Cod in new ways. We want them to understand that the water is an opportunity and there's a lot of storytelling to do. So we actually have a committee that's going to help us try to winnow out those most important stories, but we are also hoping that we can make these facilities available to private sector companies that might buy components and add to the trail themselves.
That's awesome. Great, thank you.
Council Cullum?
Just a quick question. I thought I saw in your three bullet points in mission statement and education piece there for getting people involved in education and getting degrees and things that would help the blue economy. Can you talk about how that works and, from your idea?
So, yes, and actually, Chris envisioned and spearheaded our very first career day for high school students. It was called Water Works. And we did it with the STEM Network and was hosted at the community college in January. And we had a sold-out attendance of, what, we have 300 students, Chris? 51 exhibitors. I didn't go until after lunch just to participate and I couldn't believe that these kids had been there all day long, had lunch, and they were still 100% rapt attention to what was going on. Our closing speaker was the president of Mass Maritime Academy. And afterwards, the kids were coming up to him saying, "I want to enroll in your school. I am so excited." Now I've had other parents tell me that their kids, just from that one experience, it's like, "You know, there's these jobs on Cape Cod and they're this, this and this." So I think we really have a responsibility to continue activities like that. We are in the midst of our second annual Student Perception Survey. We currently have 2,000 responses from students across the region. We're asking them, "What are the influences on your career decisions? How are you deciding what to study?" And of course, the parents are the number one influencer. So we think we also have some work to do with parents to have them understand what career opportunities would be here on Cape Cod into the future. But it's very exciting, it's a very gratifying part of the work.
Follow-up?
Yeah, if I may follow-up. I think that's awesome. And I just think that if, the more available we make these classes, the better. So if 4CE is interested in matriculating students in the blue economy, I mean, that hits a lot more kids than Mass Maritime.
Absolutely.
And especially with the focus now on, you know, your local community college degree and all the states that are going for free community college education, that would be a real boon to our economy. Thank you for all your hard work, it's awesome.
Got a great team working on it, but thank you.
Vice President Flores?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Wendy, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of comments and observations. First, I applaud the Cape Cod Chamber for being so innovative and so forward-thinking and actually even putting this grant together because I know how competitive it is to get a million dollars that you don't have to match. I mean, this is really a tremendous amount of money.
They have to match a little bit.
Oh, just a little bit?
But we've got that figured out.
Okay, well, that's good to know. But, you know, when I think about the blue economy, I remember probably 10 years ago, The Blue Ocean was the book to be read and it was, you know, all about marketing and how, you know, you looked at the world from a really a global perspective. And to realize that the Chamber is actually taking a look at all of the various industries that really have grown out of our economy in the sense that sometimes we just take them for granted, we don't realize it, but when you bundle them all together, you realize you really do have an economic engine, whether it's seafaring, whether it's oyster farms, whether it's pollution control, whether it's, I think you have a whale's tail around your neck on that chain. It's jewelry-making. It's, it just continues to grow and grow and grow. So I applaud you, I applaud Chris. I've been doing a number of presentations that Chris has given on the blue economy and I don't think anybody knows it better or does it as well, so, really.
That's how I got him to come work for the Chamber.
There you go.
I started talking about the blue economy and he's like, "Hmm."
Exactly. It's a great team effort, so I really do applaud you. We should be very proud to know that not only representing Barnstable, but the fact that we, as the Cape Cod Chamber, are headquartered in Barnstable on Patty Page Way and, you know, we're really impacting all of the Cape Cod and Islands. It's just, it's an honor really to be part of this. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote on 2019-193, acceptance of a fiscal year 2019 grant in the amount of $1 million from the Seaport Economic Council Grant Program for Expedition Blue. So moved? I got a first and a second. All those in favor of 2019-193 is drafted, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Thank you very much, covers unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilors, with your permission, we could finish orders of the day, they're a fairly light batch, and jump back after that to Town Managers Communication Act on the minutes and end with our own communications. Hearing no... Hearing no, no--
Objections?
Objections? I would ask Consulate Neary to help me again, moving to June 6th, 2019-194.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business to be moved to the June 6th Town Council meeting. It's item number 2019-194, the acceptance of fiscal year 2019 survey and planning grant from the Commonwealth in the amount of $10,000 to complete the new Massachusetts Historical Commission Inventory Forms for Historic Properties, as written.
I have a first and a second to move to June 6th, 2019-194, as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. Consul Rapgrasseti, could you help me for two, please? 2019-195, it's on page 39, and then we'll go to council appointments.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business, may be acted upon. Item 2019-195, transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the design and construction of the Addicks Lane Pump Station Sewer Expansion Project, as written.
Do I have a rationale?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council.
Welcome, Commissioner. Thank you. Director?
As a, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. As originally envisioned, this project was the natural extension of the public-private partnership between the town of Barnstable and the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank. The bank needed to install a pump station for its new facility on Addicks Lane, and the town agreed to operate and maintain it in exchange for it being installed to town standards and the ability to use it as a municipal pump station for the area. The original appropriation, 2018-085, was for the design of the entire sewer system that would serve the broader area. However, during preliminary design, it became apparent that a more efficient approach would be for the town to provide the ability for the commercial customers in the area to easily connect to the pump station by installing gravity manholes to the south of Route 132 and the north of Addicks Lane, and then connecting them to the pump station. This would allow businesses in the area to connect to the pump station when development dictates. Under this project, the town will use DPW staff to design the project, and this will be, include both design and construction. Thank you.
Any questions, Consulors? I have a question. I have to applaud the effort to revisit the Addicks Way issue. I think the Addicks Way issue had one purpose in mind, and with this, I believe you're inviting general business to pay to extend the infrastructure, and I think it's a great opportunity to see if we can entice business to participate in the process and in the expense. So thank you for rethinking this, and thank you for giving these opportunities to people on 132. Hearing no further questions, I would move 2019, I would ask for a motion to move 2019-195. Got a first and a second. All those in favor of 2019-195 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under old business, Consul Rapgrasseti, 2019-091, appointments to boards, committee, and commissions?
Mr. President, this is old business, may be acted upon. Item 2019-191, appointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission, Infrastructure and Energy Committee. Christopher Peterson, Marson's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/2020. Mid-Cape Cultural Council, Margaret Weber, Centerville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021. Planning Board, Richard, oh, excuse me, Stephen Robishaw, Barnstable, to a term expiring 6/2020. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Robert Twist, Ostriville, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/2021, as written.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. All those in favor of 2019.191, appointments to boards, committee, and commissions as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. I would ask Consul Steinheppert to help me with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the FY '20 operating budget consisting of Town Council orders 2019-161 through 2019-189, as written, to individual public hearings to be held on each order number on May 16th, 2019.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving to a date certain of May 16th, 2019-161 through 2019-189 operational budgets, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. I guess that makes it, right, gang? Here, I'm sorry. Oh, I know we got business. I'm talking about under orders of the day. We're out of the orders of the day, and we're back up the top of the agenda, please. Number six, Town Manager Communication.
Mark Els, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's update for the period of April 26 through May 2. We're proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Plan for FY 2020 ahead of schedule, and as you all know, you've just given the first reading of the appropriation orders for the town of Barnstable's 2020 operating budget. And in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Town Charter, we've proceeded with both posting the town's FY 2020 operating budget on the town's website homepage, and we will provide the town council with printed copies of the operating budget next week. Finance Director and I will present a summary of the FY 2020 budget at your next council meeting on May 16th, 2019. We're coordinating with Fish and Wildlife regarding the future potential for, to site, I'm sorry, future potential to site water supply wells on the 250-acre. I should have memorized this first sentence by now. A parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts the Hyannis Public Water System. The town continues to work with Fish and Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells in the 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. I have a final draft agreement under review authorizing the installation of test wells on the Fish and Wildlife parcel, and I anticipate signing the access agreement shortly. We plan to conduct testing on this and other parcels later this calendar year, and we will keep you advised of our progress on this important effort. So we're close to being able to move on what we've been working toward for the last two-plus years, and I can't thank the council and its leadership enough in our efforts to do this. As stated at the last Town Council meeting, we have completed a new source alternatives evaluation report. We view the management of our public drinking water resource in three broad categories, and I think it's important to start this discussion, and we've actually, we're actually well down the road in two of the areas. Managing the existing sources of water that we currently have, and that's when we're looking at existing wells, and we're looking at the challenges that we may have in those wells, especially within the municipally-operated Hyannis Water System. Quite honestly, it's one of the reasons we purchased it. We knew it was, we knew that we had quantity and quality challenges as it had been operated for 100 years by a private organization. And so we acquired it and immediately began work on improving the system and proving the ability to provide water, drinking, and fire flow in the system. So first of the three, looking at the existing system, determining what we need to do with each of those wells. Will they need filtration? Do they need to be rehabilitated? And we have been actively and will continue to work on that. Securing future potential water supplies, that's the study that is before you in summary. I've left a copy of the full study in the council office. We are embarking on meeting with our community and with our region on the citing of future potential water supplies within the town of Barnstable, and we will continue that dialogue, and I'll speak to that in a minute. I'll also speak to who I want to add to the list of people that should participate. We anticipate proceeding with public discussions-- oh, finally, wait a minute. Finally-- --establishing interconnects with abutting public water supply systems. So we've looked at our existing wells, where future potential wells may be, and how to interconnect, whether they be our own purveyors in town or whether they be abutting communities. Okay? So those are the three major areas we're looking at. We anticipate proceeding with public discussion of this report and accomplishment of associated tax, tasks to identify and secure future potential water supply locations in the town of Barnstable. So on the side of looking at wells, well rehabilitation, additions of filters where we need them, we're active in that. We've been before you for those funds. On the side of the interconnects with our districts and with abutting communities, we've done that, and we've been in here before you, both with, you know, plans and designs and permitting and construction. And now we're embarking on looking for future potential water supplies. This will be a community-wide issue. I mean, the way that I think of it, very simply, putting public water supply wells with what we know today. I know 100 years ago, we didn't have the same urban areas. We didn't have the same knowledge when many of our wells on the eastern side of town were installed. You need to separate your drinking water from your urbanized areas. It's that simple. I mean, Boston is able to do it with a reservoir 100 and plus miles to the west. We need to be looking at our lands that way, and this is the town of Barnstable, and we are looking at the entire town of Barnstable when we are evaluating this. We won't do this, you know, on an island. We will do this openly with our public. I've tasked the Department of Public Works with creating working committees, both internally, that'll involve all of our departments. It will involve our Town Council. I've tasked them with establishing a broader working group that involve our water purveyors and state agencies. I think we should involve the additional is our youth in our community, because truly, this is going to come down-- every once in a while, there was a meeting before your meeting tonight where they discussed the status of the Fire Training Academy. Now, that's called a point source, and so we, there's a known issue at that location. And I've said this many times, but it's worth repeating. There are others, and we will identify them. Most of them we're aware of, and there are challenges when you have downgrading receptors like public water supplies. Where this is advancing to is that non-point source contamination can occur. When you get down to parts per trillion, non-point, one location, one residential location can cause impact. And so we need to be aware of this as a community. This isn't going away. This is going to get much more complicated. Right now, we're focused on really one main contaminant in PFOS, and I know they have an 80 to 120 more listed, and I know that there's a much broader discussion of hundreds of these things that we use every day. And so we need to educate our youth, because this isn't going to happen overnight. They need to be engaged in this. They need to understand it. We talk about growing our economy, and they are the hope of the future so that we can achieve the things that, you know, people like you all and I are trying to lay the path for. But this isn't going to happen overnight, and so we're going to broaden it to look-- we've had a wonderful environmental technology program finally going at our high school. We have our college as a partner. We can certainly through our youth commission and others engage our youth, and it's time well spent. And like they said, the youth are very interested in this issue, this belief of quality of life. They're very interested in that, and they want to understand how things work, and they're also receptive to modifying their behavior as far as the things that they do every day, whether it's purchasing something that we probably might consider an alternative for. I always use myself as the example. I'm very difficult to change behavior at this point in life, but young people are very adaptive. So time well spent. Public Works has been tasked with both internal and external. We're going to be moving forward with these discussions. Some of them will be tough discussions, looking at our community as a whole and understanding not just where future potential water supplies go, not just looking at how that is going to impact the existing zone twos that we have in our community, and the process of establishing those, but also looking at where we have discharges, whether they be wastewater discharges, or whether they be other discharges, and making sure that the path we set is the best one that we can, given the information that we have, and that we engage as many as possible in that process. So there's a lot going on relevant to this. I've also been in discussions with the state and have the, have the opportunity to speak, you know, directly with the Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection regularly. One of the hurdles that we have in citing future potential water supply is it takes years to do this. Three to five is optimistic. We, they have, they being the commissioner and the deputy commissioner, have had conversations. The regional director of Department of Environmental Protection has spoken with me, and have all committed to sitting down and looking at this process and, and trying to expedite this process in a safe and reasonable manner, and I expect we'll start those meetings this month. So that's positive for us. We're not asking them to skip any steps. We're not asking them to waive any standards or regulations. We're just asking to engage in a meaningful process, because the challenges that we have in front of us with what I've described aren't going away, and they're going to get broader and more complicated. And so, and we'll manage each one as it comes with safety and compliance in mind, but again, these aren't going away. And so we'll continue to manage them, and we will continue to engage in our public, and we will continue to communicate with all those at the various agencies. And so I'll let you know as soon as the meeting's scheduled, but I'm confident it'll be quickly. The town of Barnstable has been in an active discussion with the Barnstable County regarding the Barnstable County Training, Fire Training Academy. We've begun discussions with the county administrator and the Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection regarding the cleanup of the Barnstable County Training Academy. I am, again, looking for the same quick responsiveness in sitting down, understanding how that site's going to be cleaned up, and assisting as much as possible, certainly within our authority, to make sure that that's done in an expedited manner. So we will keep you advised as those discussions progress as well. We're not looking for years here, okay? On Friday, April 19th, and this is something that I had read to you last week, but it merits note for the next three months certainly, because the state of Massachusetts is taking their mass contingency plan under review, and they're going to be holding public hearings on this, and I included the schedule for those public hearings, but the public doesn't have to attend a hearing at a regional office in Lakeville, let's say. They can click right onto the link I've put in here. We'll make it available on our website. You all will have it, and not only can they view what these changes are or when the public hearings occur, but they can view the public hearing that was already held to get a feeling for the issues, and from that, maybe they can formulate their comments, and they can reach out to me if they want. I'm sure they'll reach out to you. They can reach directly to DEP and communicate. This is a really important issue. This is the first of many of these issues relevant to emerging contaminants that we, we, those of us, all of us that stand on top of the water we drink, need to be understanding of, we need to participate in, we need not to point fingers, but to challenge our leaders to come up with solutions to this and, and come forward with alternatives to this and then move in that direction. Again, this isn't going away. They're going to identify more of these that we use every day, and when you're not dealing with just point sources, when you're dealing with non-point sources, it's going to get very complicated. So everybody needs to be knowing of it. And so-- And so you, again, we would just encourage people to look at this and understand it and ask questions about it and help move through this. Okay? In response to our continual concern regarding the use of synthetic chemicals and substances, we have tasked our health and safety officer, who works at our DPW, to coordinate with our chief procurement officer to conduct an internal audit of our municipal operations in an effort to identify any existing or potential use to use of said products. We had a question about whether those are being used from time to time. This isn't just about a municipal employee. This is also about contractors that we hire. And this can be missed, quite honestly, and these are products that are out there every day that, it was interesting, because I was talking with Conservation Commission about it, and they had said, well, the public uses these still for a whole bunch of reasons, and it's allowed, and the state certified. And I said, yes, I understand that, but we want to educate them, and we want to say, if there's an alternative to using that, we want them to know about it, and we want them to consider it. And now we can put together a program that does that. So the other part of this is, we've already developed, and I've taken under review, an organic land management procedure document to assure that consistent management approaches to the use of all chemicals of concern. We have that procedure in place, and that will result in policies that I'll probably discuss with our leadership and, if appropriate, bring before the town council. So you can expect, in the relatively near future, continued discussions about these products that are, you can walk into any store and you can buy them off the shelf. And so that leads to one believing that there's no detrimental impact. It's not regulated. I can do whatever in my yard or to myself with it, and I shouldn't be concerned. Well, when it gets into your drinking water, it is a concern. And that's really what this is all about. So empowering people by educating them and then hoping they make educated decisions, not in an alarm or, you know, concerned way, but in a knowledgeable way, and that's where we want to go with this. Again, the, I had, this is a reminder, both the last two items are reminders. The Planning and Development Department is hosting a downtown parking open house on Monday, May 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the hearing, here in the hearing room. The goal of the meeting is to identify key implementation priorities and strategies to best achieve the identified community goals. There will be a brief presentation by the partner team from Nelson Nygaard, followed by an interactive open house that will focus on different parking management implementation topics, and more information can be found on the Planning and Development website. Mass DOT is preparing the next five-year capital plan that will guide investment in the state's transportation system between 2020 and 2024. Public meetings are planned in May and June, and I can give you the locations. I believe the one on the Cape this year, last year it was over the RTI. I believe this year it's in Falmouth. So, but we should definitely keep an eye on that. Major transportation improvement projects that we want to see happen need to be listed. If they're not listed, that means they're not going to get money. So you've got to get them listed, and that's when they assign a project number, and that's when money can flow into those projects. Yeah, so I think it's important that they hear from us, and I've let them know they will, certainly from me and my supporting staff. So, thank you. That's my town manager update.
Counselors?
Well, it's very seldom I take exception to something you say, Mr. Manager, but you referred that it's difficult for you to find change in your ways at this time, and I can only assume that you're referencing the dinner table where you will not eat certain vegetables, because I have seen you embrace change to bring about change for the citizens of Barnstable.
Well, thank you.
So please, don't sell yourself short in that division.
I just mean, where I, you know, where I am in life, behavioral change doesn't come as easy, and therefore, yeah, as a consumer, I think the youth are so willing to embrace new ideas and go in a completely different direction, and time is well spent there. That's all. That's all.
As evidenced by the white button down, right?
Steady, steady white. Could I ask through you, please, if I could ask the Director of Finance to come forward and give us a preview of what we're hoping to accomplish on the 16th? Director of Finance, Mark Millen, who stepped up for us and got this item on the agenda so we're a touch ahead of schedule, and we intend to take some lighter lifting on the 16th and then on to the real issues of substance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've reached out to all department heads, and many of them will be available to and ready to present their operating budgets to you on the 16th, including Planning and Development, community service departments, and we'll do all of the administrative services and fixed costs as well. So we'll get about halfway through the operating budget. The other departments are, we're planning on June 6th, and they'll be ready June 6th, so we should be able to complete the budget on the 6th. If not, we have June 20th still, and we'll be within the charter requirement of acting on it within 45 days.
Thank you for your assistance in that as well. Very important for us to keep that timeframe, and that is identified so that we understand our homework as we go forward from here. Did you have a question? Consul Hebert, you want to get to the mic, please?
For the town manager?
Sure. Let's bring him back.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mark, thank you very much for looking at any of the departments or vendors who are using chemicals within our town. I do find it very interesting that apparently there was a marijuana shop that was closed down, I think it was in Mashpee, because they had used a pesticide or an insecticide to start their plants, and because of that, it was not pure, and they were shut down. And then, but the state has been allowing ever soars to spray much more on, to our water. So I'm glad that they're protecting the people who use the marijuana. I just want equal protection on the, for the rest of us. The other one is that the certification, I'm looking at the community college, and you could most probably address this, but I'm also with, John Flores is, Consul Flores is the trustee for the college. Is the college making provisions to take our students here at our school, also DY, but also Barnstable, are looking at filtration bins and looking at wastewater and how to handle wastewater and how to look at clean water, which leads to certification or associate's degrees in waste and water management? Do you know if the college is adapting itself in terms of those courses so our kids can stay here and do their, at least their associates?
They, actually, I served on the committee that, when they created the environmental technology program, and it varies to the degree of activity in that program, but yes, the program exists. It just, it varies as to the participation and, you know, I have to applaud Meg, our superintendent, in that I've probably spent 20 years trying to see an environmental technology program come here to Barnstable and exist in our high school, and now it's here. So that's wonderful, because our hope, and when I walked over to Hans and Andy, our division supervisors who oversee water and wastewater, they were excited to sit there and listen to the schools discuss the program and the capital appropriation that you all supported, and looking forward to engaging our students in exactly that, the opportunity to understand water and wastewater certifications and licensing. Now, you have to be 18 or older, I believe, to even take the tests, but that doesn't mean that you can't be ready to go once you reach that point. And then the next, one of the next logical opportunities is through our community college, which has wonderful pathways now to higher education, and you can also do a dual enrollment program through our community college where you can, actually, in the state, you can go nine, 10, 11, or 12, but many of our students choose to do their junior or senior year, either taking classes or in entirety at the community college, and certainly that's one of the areas. And so then they can spend their, they can still go to school for four years. They can just finish up their bachelor's and then go get their master's. And that's an exciting conversation to have with our young people, and technology, environmental technology, is certainly one of the opportunities. But there's many others. There's business, there's nursing, there's aviation. So we're trying to work toward having a real strong institution, Massachusetts institutional sort of presence in a UMass Cape Cod, even at that location. But that's a, that's more a vision than it is a, something that, right now, I could direct a youth from our, our community to go and follow a particular track, so.
At our community college?
Through our high school now, to our community, but John may know the activity levels better than I would at this point. I'm not sure.
Okay, and then the follow-up to that is, at the county level, there is, there is a laboratory, and they are doing terrific work, but there is apparently some equipment there that is underutilized, and so many people have been kind of pushing them forward with that. And so if the county doesn't really utilize that piece of equipment, I would like to think that it could move maybe to the college so that we would be teaching our kids, again, the final points of that kind of lab. But I'm also looking for faster results. So as, as our water department is looking at testing our water, you know, it's a lot faster than going to CMASS if we could just drive down the road.
We've had discussions with the county administrator and the president of the college. One of the great things about having the role that I do is I'm able to reach out in a very broad sense and have these sort of large-scale discussions, and we have looked at the upgrade of the county facility, knowing what I just spoke about with the issue of emerging contaminants right on our doorstep and here, right in front of us on Cape Cod, looking at the new building, the new science building that the college is building, and there will be labs included in that. And so being able to have that shared resource, both for the town of Barnstable, the county, and for people who attend Cape Cod Community. Now, I don't know that they're looking to transfer over necessarily equipment. I think what they're looking for is a more shared resource so that, and the other thing is, when you're looking at these chemicals that you're asking about, I'm sure, you know, it needs to be a certified lab, a particular type of lab structurally, you know, et cetera, so that, you know, you are assured that proper protocols are followed and the results are, you know, what they attest to be. So there needs to be a lot of thought in how they do that. It's not really a directly transferable sort of technology, so.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
We're fortunate to have our vice president also serve as a director at Cape Cod Community College. Would you like to add anything?
Just a comment from the, serving on the Board of Trustees at the college. We do, on a regular basis, discuss new directions with programs, and we have a number of cooperative programs, not only with UMass Dartmouth, but UMass Boston, also Bridgewater State University. We're constantly looking at programs that identify with our local economy, whether it's blue economy or just the economy in general, whether it's hotel management, retail. So the college is always ready, willing, and able to sit down pretty much with anybody. We have some public hearings coming up, actually, on the new science building that was approved by the state, and so there'll be news, there'll be new programs being built around, if you will, new facilities, new equipment. But as far as the college taking equipment from another department, whether it's the county or anybody else, we would be open to that, but at the same time, I don't want to, you know, tell the county, you know, how to run its business. But, you know, that would be perhaps an opportunity. And I'd also applaud, just picking up on the whole issue of the, of the, of all environmental and technology, water technology, blue economy, actually, related kinds of programs that we now have at the high school through the environmental program. We also have a similar program at Cape Cod Tech. We, other representative, Paul, so, I mean, I think collectively, we have a lot of opportunities for the kids down here in Cape Cod, and, you know, I applaud everyone who's involved in that, but the community college stands ready to really grow and meet the needs of its, of a social community across the board. We're looking at somewhere down the road, building dorms, making it, hopefully, even into a more of a four-year kind of institution. That's all long-term planning, but we're beginning that process.
Counselors, any other questions of the town manager? Yes, Consul Snip.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark. I'm very excited to see that the town is approaching our water issue across the entire community. I had two questions related to the new sources evaluation report. Is that available online? I know you said there was a copy available for the councilors in the office.
I'll have to check with Dan Santos. We will if it isn't.
Okay, great. And then the second question relates to private wells. It seems like this discussion is for everyone who's already connected to a system. Is there any consideration for those who are not?
Under the Board of Health, yes, from a, from an authority standpoint. The discussion will engage everybody. I think, you know, if I had to speculate, as we look to the western side of our community, the village of West Barnstable is going to want to have an active discussion with us about what it means if public water supply wells that serve as systems in our town are located on the east, north, I'm sorry, west, northwest portion of our town. You can't have, you can't do that without that discussion, so, and that's where our majority of private wells are located. So we need to engage all our citizens, whether they're served by a public water supply or not, and they need to participate in the discussion. And we'll be reaching out to all the existing and any new, you know, any new groups that we need to, you know, work with, create. If, so certainly, people with private wells, right now, they're regulated through our health division, so, and they don't necessarily sample on a regular basis, and the same issues, though fortunately for them, they're not in an urban area, they're in a less dense area, but the same issues apply, and the same concerns could exist, depending on, for example, where their septic system is versus their water supply and what products they use in their home. So.
Consul Rap Crisetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for the report. Also, thank you for your comment regarding Mass Dot. I guess this is my, my annual, not annual, my, yeah, weekly, weekly complaint about Mass Dot. The condition of Route 28 is pretty poor. I'm not sure as far as grade-wise, what it would be considered, but all the efforts that's gone into planning with the assistance of Cape Cod Commission to look at trouble areas from one end to another, and I know the 151 corridor is the next area to be addressed. Whatever you can do to move them east
Yes.
would be appreciated. I, thank you.
Yes.
Other counselors? Consul Cullen?
Just an observation about the whole thing with the students and the college and the dual enrollment and everything. You know, it occurs to me that the volleyball team from Barnstable High School has had the right idea since the dawn of time, which is create a pipeline. And I'm happy to see we're finally getting on board with creating a pipeline of responsible citizens that are starting here at the age of zero and working through and learning about what makes us special through the, through whatever blue economy or whatever economy it is, our seasonal economy, our tourism and all of that, in that we're kind of wrapping our arms around that from, you know, grade school to high school to dual enrollment. I think that's pretty fantastic, and I know a lot of people in our community who've benefited from the dual enrollment. And, you know, yeah, it's an amazing opportunity. I mean, I remember when I was at NOSIT, taking classes on Saturday at Four Seas 100 years ago, and dinosaurs roamed the earth, as Dante likes to remind me. But anyway, I just think it's great that we're finally, I feel like we're finally getting somewhere with it, and it's a nice thing. Thank you.
Senate Counselors? Thank you very much, Mark. Great report. I would look for Vice President to help me to act on the minutes, please.
Yes, we'll need a motion to accept the town council meeting minutes of April 25th, 2019, as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of accepting the town council meeting minutes of April 25th as written, presignified by saying aye? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Any communications that we'd like to get out, counselors? Consul Hebert, I'll work my way back from you.
Thank you, Mr. President. In everyone's mailbox, there is a reminder about the program coming up with the Cape Cod and Islands Selectments Counselors Association meeting that'll take place on Friday, May 10th. And so the details are there, and it's a trip to Nantucket, and we will be taking a bus out to their waste management facility. Not from here, we have to take a boat. The details are on here. And so, again, it's no charge to us, and we're blessed that we can park in our parking lot and walk down to the boat and get on the boat. So it's a full day, a good to the boat and get on the boat. So, it's a full day, a good day. And if, what we've done is we've invited at any town that can't send a select person to represent them, I know that we are going to be well represented here, but in any event, our waste management officials from the other towns are being invited to come and look at what they're doing in Nantucket because they've got some great programs going on there. That's number one. Number two, I'm happy to report, my tick report came back. As I talked about last week, it's as simple as going if you've bitten by a, assaulted by a tick. This is, I, I still have a scar from that. It's over two weeks old. You can contact tickreport.com. It'll put you with the zoology lab at UMass Amherst. For $50, you can have your tick checked out. A mine came back all negative, all to Lyme disease and any major disease that we're concerned about. So, again, that's informational for all of us in our region to know about that, what kind of tick it is and if it's carrying any diseases. When you go on that and you fill out the form, if you're unfortunately affected by a tick, all of a sudden, a coupon will come up from Cape, Cape Cod Healthcare that pays 35% of that. So, your actual cost to have your tick checked out is $15. And they keep referring to it as my tick. So, I, I've taken it very personal. I have a picture of this tick. It's terrific. And then the other thing is, I want to keep bringing up things that I learn as I go along. The tax department, you know, we're, we're paying our real estate taxes, our excise tax. If you use a service that pays your bills, or you call your bank and you say, you know, "Send in my, my tax amount. This is what it is," if they don't attach on that your account number, but more in particular, your bill number, that check arrives in this, the tax collector's office, and they don't know how to really identify it. So, your name is not sufficient. It helps to put your name on, but if they don't put that this is bill number such and such, it's going to take longer for that, your check to get attached to your statement that will clear your tax liability in the town of Barnstable. So, I've gotten several phone calls of people who said, "I'm in trouble. They're going to arrest me. I'm going to get charged with fees." It always gets straightened out, but we, it takes that longer to do so if you don't attach your bill number to paying your taxes on time. Thank you.
Well, under Massachusetts HIPAA law, it's difficult for us to discuss health issues in public, but we could talk about the health of the tick for one moment. Was it a deer tick, is what I'm curious.
It was a deer tick.
Thank you very much. So, it was worth checking out. Thank you.
It absolutely was. And, and they put a little comment, "It was partially fed."
Well, that was a little more than I asked for, but I guess when you open those doors, that's what can happen. Obviously, this is not pre-aired or pre-taped. Vice President Flores.
I'm just thinking, Counselor Hebert, you've really become attached to this tick, no pun intended. Have you named it yet?
Well, not that we need to discuss this in length. I was working in my yard, and I found, my wife told me I was very lucky because I went in for my general observations on Wednesday, and I had a tick bite on Tuesday, and I threw it in a bag and brought it in. And I, too, am on the penicillin. So, you're absolutely right. 'Tis the season. They're out there, and very small. I could, I could hardly get my hands on it to get it out. But thank you for the alert. Any other counselors? Yes, Counselor Wallace?
Thank you. Well, the day has finally come. The Lombard Field is complete, and we'd like everyone to join us for the official ribbon cutting, which will be held on Friday, May 10th, at 3:45 PM. And following the ribbon cutting, we will have the Barnstable High School Girl Softball Team playing Falmouth. So, it's a big game to start the season over there. And then after that, at the Luke's Love Boundless Playground, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at 4:30. And this is a, they've had a soft opening just prior to the spring break, and the Luke's Love Playground is a huge hit, and it's a really wonderful facility for our little ones. So, if you have children or grandchildren and you want a fun, really safe, healthy place to bring them, Luke's Love is the place. And so, we're looking forward to seeing everyone on Friday, May 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. I'm looking to the side. Any other counsel question? Hearing none, I take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.